It's seven, seven o'clock. Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, and we'll call this meeting in the Fergus Falls City Council Committee, the whole, or your roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business on the agenda this evening, or this morning, is a discussion item on the state bonding request for Riverfront Corridor Phase Two. I'll call on Andrew Bremse. Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Your Honor, committee members, council members, whatever you want to call them today. This thing just turned on, so I think I'm good to go. I'm here this morning looking for a resolution of support authorizing the city of Fergus Falls to submit a bonding request to the state legislature for Phase Two of our Riverfront project. The request will be for a million dollars. The city previously secured 1.75 million in state bonding for the project, and since the project is now phased in over a multi-year period, it did open up an opportunity for us to see conditional state bonding for this project, so we figured we might as well take advantage of that opportunity. And with the Phase Two project coming in, just over 2.1 million dollars, we thought a million-dollar request would be appropriate. We have the required 50% match through donations or through the fundraising efforts that are going to take place, so we are comfortable moving forward with this request. Essentially, the budget that was approved by the council for this project stands, and if we were to get this million dollars, it would just be infused into that budget, so it would lessen the local burden and the local amount needed for bonding, so essentially making the project cheaper for our local residents. So, the goal is to construct Phase Two next year in 2022. The bonding bill that this request would be in would hopefully be approved in the 2022 legislative session that should conclude in May. So, if they get their work done on time and are included, the timing actually works out very well for the process that we have lined for Phase Two. They really look for capital projects that are shovel-ready, and I don't know of a project that's more shovel-ready, or will be more shovel-ready at that time than this project. So, really is a good proposal, good request, and I think we should be able to have some success in the legislative session. So, if the council's on board, I need this resolution of support. The deadline for submission is this Friday on putting all the application and the information needed together. This will be the final component of that. We'll get it uploaded, and then we are home free through that process, and both Senator Ingubritson and Representative Erasmussen are aware of this. They're both willing and able to support legislation to this effect, and once we make this request on Friday, assuming this goes forward, they will introduce bills for the next legislative session, and then we are on our way.
Thanks, Andrew. We can do that by resolution this morning?
I would love to have that resolution, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions or comments, Andrew?
So, for the, for the folks watching at home, this, this Phase Two includes the splash pad. That's right. Your Honor, Councilman Rufe, that's, glad you asked that. I should have mentioned that, but I think a lot of folks aren't aware of that. So, yes, Phase Two is further expanding the riverfront balcony on the north side of the river, a fairly significant splash pad feature that's unique to Fergus Falls, mimicking the Otter Tail River and incorporating otters and other various components, and some sort of pedestrian and bicycle bridge that will connect the Riverwalk on the south side to the Riverwalk, the new Riverwalk on the north side. I'll just say thank you to you and the staff for all your work on this. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Yeah, Your Honor, let me just mention, I should have before, for that item, you're acting as the city council, because I need the resolution by Friday. The rest of them are going to be pushed to the city council meeting on Monday. I should have made that clear, but thank you.
Yep, no, no problem. Thank you, Andrew. Item number two is animal release fee, and we'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning, and thank you, Your Honor. Section 91 of our ordinance deals with animals, and there's a provision in there for an animal release permit that has not been utilized. So, what I'm requesting is that an animal release permit fee be established at $25, and that would increase incrementally $25 each time the same animal is taken into the Humane Society. That fee would be due here at City Hall before the animal would be released from the Humane Society. It would hopefully just reduce the number of repeat offenders, I guess we could say, of animals that are taken in multiple times. So, that's the request, animal release permit fee, $25. That would increase incrementally by 25 bucks each time.
So, thanks, Guy. Just, because I had a cat one time that got, and I'm just trying to remember how that process works. So, they, do they have a release? How does that work again? I don't remember.
The Humane Society, they have a fee which basically covers their, the room and board for the animal during the time it's staying there, so this would be on top of the fees that the Humane Society charges.
And so, they have to get the fee at the city before they were able, before the Humane Society would be able to release the animals, correct?
Yes, yep. That's, procedurally, would request that the receipt that they obtained from paying the release permit fee here would have to be shown at the Humane Society before they would release it.
Okay.
Just made another question, your point of clarification for the public. I think also, isn't there something where they check animals, make sure they're updated and shots, and if they're not, they do that as well as a precautionary for the safety of the public?
We're working through that with Humane Society staff. We've, yeah, we've got that request into them, and we're somewhat successful in that, but we're going to push that.
All right, I'll offer that, Your Honor.
And I'll second it, and I have a question. Do we have a lot of people that have the same animal you pick up?
Yeah, that's the reason why the request came in. The Humane Society staff asked that we implement something like this because of the repeat animals.
Okay, thank you.
Ben's cat.
Yeah.
Being expensive cat by the end of the year. Scott has a question.
Scott has a question.
Scott.
And the process is they have to come here first and pay the City Hall $25 before they go pick up their animal?
Correct.
So, the Humane Society isn't going to pick this up as an extra fee and then reimburse the city. They actually have to come here in person and pay it, and then go out there. So, it's a bit of a hassle for the person, but hopefully that's part of the point of it, right?
Correct, yep, that's the hope. And, yeah, just to note, any fees collected would just go to offset animal control costs.
What was the cat's name?
Mouse. All right. All favor that motion to bring this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number three is Public Improvement 5333, Union Avenue Street and Pedestrian Improvement Project, and we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yuvar. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, and members. Yes, during the final design for the Public Improvement 533, this is the Union Avenue Street and Pedestrian Improvement Project from Washington Avenue to Lincoln, we determined the city has adequate utility easement, but inadequate legal street right-of-way for the city improvements. The subject property is shown on the screen, Platted Reserve 70. This is located at southwest quadrant of Stanton and Union. The area highlighted is a subject perpetual easement that we're looking to acquire. This was noted upon our first state aid review, because state aid review requires legal rights. These projects such as this being cleared for legal right-of-way, it was determined this area was not. So, Bolton and May contacted the property owner, Kevin Bartram, and he's willing to grant the city a perpetual street utility easement, excuse me, perpetual street easement over, under, and across Reserve 70, as shown in the highlighted area. By getting this, the city will be allowed to move further on with the state aid review. The cost is a dollar payable to Kevin Bartram for this easement, and then general staff time and city attorney time that will be on the city share to prepare the necessary easement documents to be recorded. So, at this time, I'm requesting authorized myself and the city attorney to execute the perpetual street easement across Reserve 70 between the city of Fergus Falls and Kevin Bartram.
Thanks, Brian. What is, what is Reserve 70?
Reserve 70 is, I did some history behind this. I'm not coming up with a lot of information, but in the, back in the platted days, and I'd have to talk more to the surveyor, but a lot of these were reserved as poor government lots because they're surrounded by meandering waters such as the river. That's typically, but I don't know precisely what, how this was back in the day.
Okay. Somehow it got associated with the parcel that is now the middle project.
Got it.
Okay, we can do this by my motion to bring this to the council. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Justin. Any other questions for Brian? All favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. And item number four is an update on the landfill, which is Public Improvement Number 9771, and again, we'll call on Brian Yuvar to introduce our guest from Houston Engineering.
Yes, thank you. If you recall, it was back in actually July 2020, the city council accepted a professional services agreement with Houston Engineering, who is our professional consultant for our landfill, about $84,000 to do some work that was requested by the Minnesota PCA. This, this work was in regards to our closed landfill site, SW 184. Throughout this year, it's, we did some sampling that was required and developed a working plan to somewhat satisfy the requirements of the MPCA. Just recently, we sent a work plan to the PCA that's under their review, but we thought it was good to just turn, I want to turn it over to Dennis McAlpine and Brad from Houston Engineering. They were just going to give you an update on what the findings were. I think, think it's very positive, but we're here to answer any questions about this old closed landfill site. I just want to note, you know, these fees that we paid before were pre-approved already, and they are eligible for our assurance fund, and we do have it, so they're not on the local levy, but primarily come out of the interest more on this account that the city holds. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Dennis.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Just a comment on administrative stuff here. Can you see my screen? You should see a slide that says Closed Landfill.
Yes, we can.
Yes, you can, okay. Well, thanks, Brian. Thank you for your time this morning, Mayor, council members. As Brian said, we've been working on this project for really the better part of a year. I think we, we met and provided a summary of what we were anticipating to do. I guess we're really timely, almost a year to the day. So, our purpose today is to follow back with you and tell you what we found. So, we have a brief presentation here, and I'll rattle through a few slides that you've probably seen before, and then we'll get to the more technical bits, and that's where Brad Pashong, our hydrogeologist, will provide an update, so. So, you have two facilities, two permitted, two distinctly different permitted facilities, and what we're going to talk about today is SW 184, which is the existing operation. You have a current, you know, current permitted facility for C and D disposal in 572, but we are not at all talking about that today. You do not, you have limited groundwater monitoring, and that's, you know, we went to great lengths with the last cell construction project and aligner so that you would not have to go down that road of having to monitor for your operations. So, we're going to be talking about SW 184. So, in terms of the, I guess, the financing of this, you know, you folks were, were very progressive, and you did what you were supposed to do back in the day when you were operating SW 184, and you funded a financial assurance fund, and that financial assurance fund covers both post-closure care and contingency action. So, that's for, for when the facility closes, there are funds to take care of the facility in perpetuity, so for things that might crop up in time. With those, there's also annual obligations, so the city, you take care of a variety of things ongoing for the closed facility to, to care for it. So, you can see the bulleted list on the right there between, you know, groundwater and leachate monitoring, leachate treatment, and there's some, you know, annual mowing, and then reporting that needs to take place. So, that's one leg of, of that financial assurance is the post-closure care. The other being contingency action. So, these facilities in closure, they may develop, you know, issues over time, and this fund is there to help remediate any of them issues over time. So, that's the corrective action component. So, that's what we're working under right now. That's what has funded this effort. I think you, your fund is well-funded to the point where I, I'm not entirely certain that you've spent any dollars out of it. You've, you've spent maybe the interest on, on that financial assurance fund. So, really, why are we here? You know, the PCA, they provide regulatory oversight of the, of the facility, and it's part of an ongoing process. They've, they've asked that we revisit the MNA process that was developed roughly 10 years ago now, so as, as an update to see what progress was happening. You do have a contamin, there is contamination at the site, and they wanted to understand, you know, where it has moved, if it has moved, to the extent of it, and, and how that affects those surrounding landowners. So, so with that, I'm going to pass it over to Brad, who is our hydrogeo person, and he's very technical, so we're going to give you an overview of what we did and what we found.
Hey, good morning, everybody. I'm going to request remote control from Dennis here and see if I can make this work. Do you guys see my, you can see my mouse moving on the screen?
Nope.
No.
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 We cannot. You can control Dennis McAlpine's screen. Uh, no, you can't. Okay, well, anyway, Dennis would, Dennis would, okay, oh, that's Dennis moving. What we were tasked to do by the MPCA is, is basically update the, update the study and kind of take a fresh look at it, because we, we had a new hydro at the MPCA on staff, and it's a very complicated site. They asked us to update the private wells, you know, the private wells kind of come and go, and the, the red dots here are, are the suspected private wells that we had 10 years ago, and they, they wanted to make sure, are those private wells still around, or they're, have they been abandoned, or disconnected, or what? So, that was part, part of our task, and if, if we could get access to these, to sample the wells too, because it's been a long time since we've sampled them. They wanted us to look at corrective action options for this thing, and one of the simplest ones and the ones you look at first are this monitored natural attenuation, and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about that later. And then they really wanted a path forward, you know, where are we, where are we going? What can we expect here? The update to the private wells is basically everybody still had their private well. There was a few that were abandoned over the 10 years, and those have been removed, but primarily everybody on this map here, with the exception of Jackson and Beatty up on West Douglas Avenue, everybody else has been disconnected from their private well and hooked up to municipal system. So, the only use of these wells right now is for irrigation and lawn watering, you know, gardens and things like that. So, there's no potable use of these wells, with the exception of Jackson and Beatty. So, Dennis, we can click the next slide. You know, we've done, there's been a ton of work done at, at this thing, and we, we really want to focus on effective uses of any new soil borings, and, you know, not duplicate any efforts, so we, you know, there's been, you know, 130 wells and borings done to date on this thing, so we, we want to make sure it's, it's as effective as we can get. And Dennis, you can kick it forward again. It's, it's a very complicated site, and this is a complicated thing. It kind of talks to the, the different vintages of work that's been do, been done, and you can see we kind of started out in the middle here, and as time goes on, all the borings get further away, and, and that's what we find today, is we need a couple more borings that are outside of this area, and especially in the area where it was just circled right there, to the northwest of the landfill. If you click to the next slide, we can show you the existing vinyl chloride plume today. This is the, kind of a combination plume. We have two different aquifers, we're water-bearing units here. There's an upper one and a lower one, and this is the extent of vinyl chloride in the combined aquifers. Now, we're talking about crazy small numbers here. The intervention limit, which is the IL, vinyl chloride extent greater than the IL, the intervention limit is the limit that the MPCA is the initial thing. If you, if you exceed 0.2 parts per billion, you know, we got to figure out what's going on, and right now, that's the extent of the plume that exceeds 0.2 parts per billion. So, that's 200 parts per trillion, and so, we're talking some really small numbers here as you get down to the outskirts of this plume. But you can see that the greater concentrations come from the, the closed area, so it's pretty, pretty evident that the, the contamination did originate on the old, old landfill site, and then it's just basically slowly diffused out. We can, the edge of the plume that we have, Dennis, just go back just a bit. There's, we were able to sample all of the private wells, with the exception of the two that are directly north of the landfill, Geese and Kena, and we have been in contact with those people, and, and they are willing to let us sample them. Just the configuration of the wells right now don't allow us to sample those, so we might have to make arrangements in the future to make those wells accessible to our sampling equipment. Right now, I don't, they're not just hooked up to a hose figure like a lot of them are, so, okay, we can look at the next slide. The geology of this area is, is very complex. Basically, you had a glacier that sat here, glacier came down from the north, it basically sat on top of the landfill, and it's just like pushing dominoes off the edge of the table. It continued to push sand and gravel and deposited right in the area of the landfill. And, and this is a schematic, this is one of the programs we used. It's called Leapfrog. It's a 3D visualization program to kind of show where the sands are and help us understand the geology of this area. And the yellow represents the sand in the landfill, and, and if you can envision how water has to move through there, water would come basically from the top of the screen and through those, kind of those hills of sand right there, you know, it goes from high pressure to low pressure. So, you know, the, the path of the groundwater through the land, through and beneath the landfill is fairly complicated, you know, and it flows through those areas and around the areas where there's, the blue is basically the clays that the, that the glacier deposited. So, the, the geology is, is highly complex here, and, and there's a lot of borings in here, but there's still a lot of interpretation that has to happen. You can go to the next slide, Dennis. We did just a, a boatload of, of cross-sections to try and get our hands around what's going on here, and I like to focus on cross-section A, which is the blue line, and cross-section C. They're both kind of from northwest to southeast through the landfill, and kind of give you a flavor of, of what's going on. This is cross-section C, C prime, so this basically goes right through the center of the landfill. The south is on the right-hand side, the north is on the, the left-hand side. And we have a couple different areas. We have an upper oxidized sand, which is the yellow and the kind of the, the peach color up here. That's a, that's a more recent deposit, and that overlays a previous glacial event or glacial events. That's the un-oxidized sand, and that's the gray and the gold colors down below. And, and so, these two, two or more glacial events mixed together, and there's a lot of sands deposited in each one of them that, that they're either connected or not connected, and that was part of our, that's part of the issue here. You can see that the yellow area, the oxidized sand, there is quite a bit of sand right through the, the landfill area here, and the complicating matter in it is the deeper sands have a different water table than the upper sands do. So, there's, that's the upper and the lower aquifer units. So, those are very complicated. Now, you can see in the middle there, it says the closed municipal solid waste landfill projected. That's just off the edge of the, the old cell, and the hatched areas down below are the impacts of the vinyl chloride. We think that the vinyl chloride or tetrachloroethylene, which is a solvent and used in many manufacturing processes or dry cleaning, there's a lot of different uses for tetrachloroethylene, that leached out of the bottom of the landfill, and it's heavier than, than, than water, so it tends to sink to the bottom of the aquifer. And the hatched areas are the areas where we have detections of vinyl chloride or tetrachloroethylene in, in the aquifer. And it's, it's fairly complicated. You can see the, the different water level elevations, like in, yep, right in there, Dennis. We have, those little triangles illustrate the different water level elevations in these wells and the different depths, so it's a, it's a complicated process here. Okay, you can go to the next one. And this is, this is a cross-section, this is AA prime, basically right along the north of the interstate there. And the reason I wanted to show this one is, is because the, the potential receptors off to the left-hand side, the Heitman and Newlieb wells, you can see where those private wells are in relation to the, the impacted sands that are coming off the landfill. And so, we're, they're definitely in the target zone for these contaminants as they come northwest out of the landfill. What we do know about this is groundwater flow directions in these different aquifers. This is the upper aquifer, and this groundwater flows from the southeast to the northwest. So, you can see that the, the potential residential wells, which are now basically irrigation wells, are kind of directly in the target zone, and that's, that's one of the directions that we clearly have to evaluate. And the deeper aquifer has a different groundwater flow direction, and that's directly to the west. Now, right now, we don't have any receptors identified to the west, the west of I-94. So, what we are going to have to find, though, is the definition of the edge of the plume, and this is the extent of the plume. The MPCA is, as they should be, concerned of where the edge of the plume is. And so, we've identified two locations here, FF 22 and FF 23, which we intend to, which we've presented to the MPCA as potential locations to define the edge of this plume in the, you know, in the northwest direction, and then the straight west direction. And these are basically on the, uh, public, or I'm sorry, the city of Fergus Falls right-of-way, and accessible to drill rigs or public land, and I think these are going to be fine locations for us. We've also added in, you can see Geese in that Kena slash Ecker well. We think those would be good locations to have as permanent monitoring locations, and we've proposed that to the MPCA, and that would require an agreement with the, with the landowners from the city of Fergus to allow access to that like one time per year. And they seem, we, we haven't approached them on that specific thing, but they were, they were willing to let us sample the wells initially, so we think that's a, a pretty good spot. These, these two locations, FF 22 and FF 23, would probably be nested wells, so we'd have basically two locations at each one of these. We'd have a shallow well, and then five feet away from it, we would have a deeper well, so we can monitor both the upper and the lower aquifers. What is that monitored natural attenuation, anyway? There's naturally occurring bacteria in the environment that, that can degrade these things, if, if the conditions are right, and if you have the right groundwater conditions. Tetrachloroethylene has, tetra has four chlorine atoms in it, and it degrades to three, which is tri, and two, and one, which is vinyl chloride, and eventually degrades to ethene. And these bacteria that we have in, naturally in the environment will, can't degrade these things. I mean, bacteria needs an energy source, a place to live, and a food, and basically the tetrachloroethylene, trichlore, that's the food for them, and the, we can go to the next slide. The energy source ranges from oxygen in the, in the environment to nitrates, and as they slowly And as they slowly consume all of these different energy sources, you know, the, the oxygen will eventually be consumed. And then they move to nitrates for an energy source. And then a different bacteria takes over and they use manganese and iron for their energy source. And we eventually end up with sulfate, a bacteria that uses sulfate to, to degrade the vinyl, the vinyl chloride at the end. And eventually at the end, we're going to get nothing. And that's what we've shown. We've done the sampling in the aquifer for these different parameters and done the modeling of these analytes. And it looks like the, the aquifer supports monitored natural attenuation, that the conditions are proper in, in the aquifer for, for this degradation to occur. For instance, the tetrachloroethylene, we've only seen it, you know, that's, that's the initial source of this stuff. We think that that's almost been degraded completely away. There's only one well and it's tetrachloroethylene still exists. And right now, it's all degraded pretty much to vinyl chloride. Now, the hiccup with vinyl chloride is, is it's pretty recalcitrant. It's kind of the tough one to get, but the, the trends are, are heading the right way and the MPCA agrees that this is the right thing to do. So it's not an immediate fix. It will take years to fix this, but we're headed in the right direction. And what the, the study also showed was it's really unlikely that the vinyl chloride is going to make it. It will not migrate to the existing wells like the, the ones along Highway 1 up there. It won't go that far. It will, it will degrade long before that. And that's the purpose of FF-22 and FF-23 is to confirm that the vinyl chloride isn't migrating out that far. And we fully anticipate those wells to be non-detect for vinyl chloride. But we do need those perimeter wells as kind of an early warning for the receptors further out. And let's see. And that's, that's about all I've got for you guys. If you got any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
You don't have any questions? Yeah, Scott.
Looks like you've done quite a lot of work to determine what the status is as we know it. But if you were to find something that required some action, what action could you possibly take? I mean, what, what kinds of solutions might there even be if there was some reason to do something? Because this is.
Vinyl chloride is tough, but it, it does respond to oxygenated water. You can degrade it with oxygenated water. So you may have to put in a, oh, kind of a air stone kind of thing, like an aquarium air stone, for lack of a better term. Called air sparging, like a cutoff wall out there. So there, there are technologies. You don't want to pump the water out of the ground and try and treat it on the surface. We would try and treat it in situ, you know, in, in surface, in the subsurface. So I would go with air sparging right off the bat. But we do have, you know, several decades worth of data here. And the, the concentrations have decreased significantly. We do see a strong decrease in time and in distance as we get away from here. So I think the, it, it is possible that we could go to a, a more active remediation, but I think that's pretty unlikely right now, luckily.
Your honor. So which way, on, on the two aquifers you're referencing, which direction is the water moving?
The aquifer is pretty complicated. In the upper aquifer alone, it, it moves from the, from the southeast to the northwest. And then in the deeper aquifer, it moves straight west. Now, there is some, there are, these are kind of simplified. There are some areas where the upper and the lower aquifers are interconnected. And, you know, it, it's a little more complicated. But the bottom line is, is it basically moves from east to west, from up slope, uphill to downhill, basically.
So hence why the plume is going obviously to the, more to the east, to the west and northwest.
To the west and to the north. Yep, exactly. That's why it's kind of shifted off that way. Yep.
Other questions?
Well, thank you. How deep is the well? I mean, how deep are testing?
The wells are fairly deep. They can be 100, 100, 150 feet deep. So that's part of the, that's part of the issue for some of the costs because the wells are so deep. So the, the water table aquifer is about 50 feet deep, 40 to 50 feet. There's quite a bit of topography out there. So it depends on where you are. But it's, yeah, 50 to 150 feet deep.
Now, this is not as, not uncommon for a facility of this age. You know, the disposal operations at this site, you know, they date back to, you know, turn of the century. So for to have impacts like this at this, you know, at these levels and concentration, that's not unheard of.
No, it's real common.
It's real common. It's a product of, you know, what our, the folks before us, you know, might not have known. So it was a low area and it made sense to, to, you know, fill it with waste.
I should do. Any other questions? Thank you for that update, Brian. Did you have anything to?
No. Like I mentioned, you know, we're working with MPCA. We identified two, two other wells we're looking at monitoring. Coming back with the council once it gets funded. And, you know, just to stress too, you know, wells by the city are not permitted in this vicinity. Everything's on municipal water, with the exception of two. We're working on Douglas Water Main Project to make another connection and everything. So just want to stress, very well aware of the situations around there and everything's being handled accordingly.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, Brian. And thank you to Houston Engineering for the update. And with that, there are no other additional agenda items, no updates that I'm aware of. So with that, we will be adjourned.